All right. Good evening, everyone, staff and council members. Thank you. Welcome to the 4:00 PM work session for City Council for today, January 14th. And we have one item on our agenda today, and that's to hear a presentation by staff from the National Research Center, Inc., regarding the results of the 2019 citizen survey. I'll turn to Ms. Severcek and Ms. Martin for this.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mayor, and members of council, the city of Lynchburg has been utilizing the National Research Center to conduct the national citizen survey every other year since 2004. And actually, our representative from NRC just informed me that we actually were a pioneer in contracting with them years ago. So this is number seven, citizen survey number seven. And Joanne has, Joanne Martin, has been the lead staff person in working with both citizens here to get the word out that the survey is coming and working directly with the staff person at the National Research Center. So I would like to introduce Joanne to you to introduce our guest. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council. Happy to bring to you today Morgan Adams. She's a senior research analyst with the National Research Center that will be presenting the results of the 2019 citizen survey to you. Tomorrow, she will also be meeting with members of the senior leadership of our 70, not only the leadership team members, but members of their senior staff to do Next Step workshop so we can take the survey from just a report and data and to make it useful to help us with the Lynchburg plan and to also come up with useful performance measures so we can actually use the information that we gleaned from the citizen survey. So at this time, I'm happy to introduce to you Morgan Adams with the National Research Center.
Thank you. Great. Awesome. All right, well, I hope you're all settled in because it's going to take a couple hours. I'm just teasing. So as Joanne mentioned, my name is Morgan Adams, and I'm a senior research analyst with the National Research Center. I'm very happy to be here today. I've been the project manager for Lynchburg since 2015. So I'd really like to take a moment to thank Joanne for all of her hard work. She's been a real pleasure to work with, very knowledgeable, and really, I think, does an amazing job getting the word out about these surveys, which is immeasurable. So thank you. So in general, you're going to find that this presentation is just a summary of the detailed information that you can find in your reports. I'm sure all of you have it memorized by now, but in case you haven't, I'm going to go over the key highlights from this year's survey. And then I'm also going to go into a little bit of depth about the national citizen survey itself, as well as a little bit of methodology. I'm going to have time at the end, of course, for questions, but if you have anything as we're going along, please let me know. So the national citizen survey, or the NCS, as we like to call it, is a turnkey, templatized survey that we developed, our company, with the ICMA. And what this does is it provides you not only with a low cost because it's templatized, but it also provides you with the greatest number of benchmark comparisons for your results. So to date, we've had over 400 communities that have conducted the national community survey, and we have over 600 jurisdictions in our national benchmarking database. So there's a lot of communities that we can compare against. And because we've been in the business of creating surveys for local governments for well over 25 years now, we have discovered that there are three main pillars of community livability that exist, and these are community characteristics, governance, and participation. Now, within each of these three pillars, we've also derived eight facets of community livability from models. And these include things like safety, mobility, natural environment, community engagement, and others. So you'll find that each question that we asked on the survey can be further categorized into one of these eight facets. So as Bonnie mentioned, this year was the seventh administration of the NCS. And it's true, you are pioneers. The citizen survey was developed in 2001, and you've been doing it since 2004. So hats off to you. Not many communities can say they have that long of trend lines. We did send out a random scientific sample of 1,700 mailings to households here in the city. Each household got three mailings. The first one was a pre-notification postcard to let people know that the survey would be coming in the mail, and that was followed by two waves of survey packets. And in these packets, we included not only the survey, but also a cover letter to let residents know a little bit of background about what we were doing, asking them to participate and do their civic duty. And then we also included a URL link where residents could go and take the survey online if they chose to do so. So we had a 24% response rate for 377 returned surveys this year, 79 of which were completed online. We also conducted an open participation survey online, and that was open to all residents, and we got 82 responses. And you can find those results in a supplemental report that's separate from your others. Data collection lasted eight weeks, and we tracked responses by the four city wards in order to delve a little bit deeper into those results. So we also have comparisons of the results by those four wards. We also have other supplemental add-ons that we added on to the basic service. This included a breakdown of the results by demographic characteristics such as age and gender. We also provided you not only with those national comparisons, but also comparisons to your results for a select subgroup of communities. And these communities were others in the area, in the southern region of the United States, that were populations 50,000 to 100,000. We'll also be conducting a Next Steps workshop, as Bonnie mentioned, tomorrow. So we have, oh, yes, of course.
You guys are going to address it, but so obviously, we've been doing it for a long time, as you mentioned, seven times, and the response rate is 24%. What has happened with that response rate over time? Has that increased? Has it been the same, or has it decreased?
It's declined since the beginning, which is very-
What was the first one that we did? Do you remember?
I don't remember. That was done in 2004. If I had to guess, it was probably in the mid to high 30s. We've seen response rates across the country, not only for citizen surveys, but just as an industry, we've seen declining response rates. We've seen them kind of even out over the last, I would say, five years or so. So we've maintained a mid-20s percentage rate, which is very common for citizen surveys.
I was just curious, because I remember when we first did it, there were some, lots of different things that were uncovered with it in 2004. I've been here the whole time, and they've all been there. And I've always been a little concerned that when we have a survey, and then we don't follow what is suggested in a survey, eventually, people stop answering the survey.
Sure.
And so apparently, that may have happened somewhat, if it's gone in the mid-30s down to now the mid-20s, so.
Right. And I think in general, people are just feeling survey fatigue. I think people get, you know, requests all the time to take surveys. And so I think, you know, community surveys are a little bit different in that people feel a little bit of a civic duty, they live here, they want to see improvements. And I think it's always kind of complemented communities that can continue to keep a response rate in the last few years, because I think what that says is that the community sees that leadership cares about the results and cares about how they feel about their town and are willing to make changes based upon their feedback. So I think that anytime you can tell residents, "Great, we've heard you, this is what we're planning to do," that makes a world of difference with response rates.
I think it'd be that maybe they believe that we have been doing those things that they have said, and people are satisfied with some things, and-
Definitely. And I think you'll see that in the results here. You know, we have, we have quite a few that, you know, we've seen a lot of increases in mobility, which I think I'm excited about. So, yeah.
I would probably say a 24% response rate is probably pretty, pretty good-
Yes.
-for a survey type.
Yes. We have been starting to see, you know, things as low as, you know, the mid-teens sometimes. Obviously, it depends on the community itself. You know, smaller communities tend to have higher responses, response rates, but, you know, demographics also play a very large role. We're always trying to aim at, you know, that younger group, people that are just less likely to respond in general. All right. So as I mentioned, we have 600 communities that we compared your results against. And looking at those comparisons, there were 133 that were available this year. 121 of those were similar, four of them were higher, and eight of them were lower. The ratings that were higher included cost of living in Lynchburg, the percentage of residents who work here in the community, participation in religious or spiritual events, and rates of volunteerism. And the lower ratings tended to be related to the natural environment and a couple of mobility items. And just to give you a little bit of perspective on those benchmarks, we actually make it fairly difficult to be higher or lower in order to really highlight those areas that might be an area of opportunity or those that are really performing well in your community. So anytime that you see something that's denoted as higher or lower in those results, that means that there's at least a 10-point spread between the national average and the Lynchburg average. And if we have a rating that's much higher or much lower, there's at least a 20-point difference between the two. So just keep that in mind as kind of we're going along here. So as I mentioned, we also compared against other southern region communities with populations between 50,000 and 100,000. Of these, 119 were similar, three of them were higher, and 11 were lower. The three that were higher were cost of living, opportunities for religious events, and working in the community. Now, looking at our ratings between 2019 and 2017, as you can see, quite a few of them remain stable over time, 115 out of the 133 possible. Nine of them were higher, and nine of them were lower. We saw both upwards and a couple of downward trends in mobility. We also saw a number of increases in recreation and wellness. And then the lower trends tend to be within community engagement and natural environment. So the margin of error between years is 7%. So any difference you see in the results that are higher than seven percentage points can be considered statistically different from each other. So this is what we call our honeycomb structure, and what this does is just gives you an overall picture of how all of the ratings within a facet compared to those national benchmarks. So you can see, all of them are on par and similar with national communities. And then we also asked residents to identify which they felt were the most important to them for the next two years, and they chose safety and economy. And this is very common. Safety and economy, as I know you know, is often right at the top of residents' minds. But I also wanted to note, too, that mobility and natural environment were also pretty high on the priority list. So this is, presentation's going to be focused around those mean key findings, and so what we did was, our first key finding was that Lynchburg's residents feel that economy is a priority. Now, most of the economic ratings for Lynchburg were on par with those in other similarly-sized peer communities and the nation. We had six in 10 say they felt positively about the cost of living in the community, and at least half awarded high marks to the overall economic health of the city, Lynchburg as a place to work, and economic development services. Roughly four in 10 also favorably reviewed employment and shopping opportunities, and more residents gave excellent or good scores to employment opportunities in 2019, and that actually hit a 15-year high. So I think that that's very noteworthy and great news.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
Employment opportunities, it's great to see that goes up. So what is the question behind it, or what are the questions behind that? Is Lynchburg a good place to seek opportunities for employment? And so the higher rating is the more positive answer? What's the, help me understand that question.
Sure, absolutely. So the question is titled, "Please rate the following characteristics in Lynchburg as a whole." And one of them is job opportunities, and it's asked on a scale of excellent to poor. So it's the residents who viewed job opportunities as excellent or good versus those who did fair or poor.
Okay, so 50% would be statistically satisfactory, I guess, or-
Yes.
So anything above 50%, we've got excellent or improving employment opportunities or better than the norm. Anything below 50%, we're less than the norm for employment opportunities. Is that the way I should interpret it?
Well, we're on par with the benchmarks itself, but as far as your trend lines, which is really the most important thing as we're going through those, because you, only you can compare to you as accurately as you can. So that's what we're kind of looking at, is that over, since 2004, employment opportunities has hit an all-time high, and it's statistically different from previous years. So it'll be, it's more than seven percentage points greater than 2017 and prior.
Right. But it's also not where I think it should be, and what I'd like it to be.
Oh, of course. Yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what I should take from policy, for policy decisions from this data. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So because you highlighted only the one that increased, that's assuming the others, you didn't highlight those that may have been increased, or were they consistent with the benchmark, I guess?
The other ones have been consistent with your results over time.
Okay.
And then all of these are on par with the exception, you can notice that with the gold stars. I kind of like to take it back to kindergarten. So cost of living and the people that have worked in Lynchburg with those two gold stars, those are higher than the benchmarks, both national and peer cities. And everything else has remained stable over time. And I really don't want to underplay either what it means to be stable either, because as you know, with changing times, you know, context changes and people feel differently. And so I think maintaining those high services definitely speaks volumes as well. So taking a closer look at housing, we found that about half of the community members thought highly of the variety of housing options and the availability of affordable quality housing, and these were comparable to the benchmarks. However, 85% felt that providing quality, affordable housing for all income levels should be a high or medium priority for the city and its community partners. And this was pretty similar to 2017 levels.
Seems to me those are not conflicting.
Well, what we're doing is, the 85% is a special question that's asked by the city of Lynchburg to residents based upon their priorities. So while we have benchmarks for the two items, like variety of housing and affordable housing, we don't have them for your custom. But I think one thing that we really like about the benchmarks is that it provides context. For instance, in services, we always know that fire services are going to be rated at the top. Everyone loves their fire services. But unless something is really bad, usually, street repair is around the 30% mark, regardless of where it is. So people just feel differently about those services, which is why we like those benchmarks, because they provide so much context. So while it might seem that you're on par with the variety of housing options and affordable housing, I can tell you that as a trend where we normally see, it's been plummeting. So I think it's great that, that we're still seeing some stability here at Lynchburg.
Great, thank you.
So 40%, 47% of community members stated that the city had made some or significant progress in this goal, and that's similar to 2017, when they felt 46% said that there was progress. And now another special question that we asked on this survey. We asked if the city had too little, too much, or the right amount of a variety of housing options, given the projected population growth in the next 10 years. As you can see, about seven in 10 respondents felt there was too little housing for seniors, and about half felt similarly about housing that is geared toward young residents. Single-family detached housing residents tend to be kind of split between having enough or needing more housing. And then four in 10 felt fairly positively about the amount of townhomes, whereas we kind of see opinions about multifamily housing being split between those three categories of too much, too little, and a fair amount.
Do you expect people are considering multifamily housing to be apartment complexes?
I would, yes.
Thank you.
So our next key finding was that residents have a little bit of mixed feelings about About seven in 10 Lynchburg residents felt positively about the overall ease of travel and the travel by car. Both of these increased since 2017, and half of them were pleased with the ease of travel by walking in the community. All of these ratings were on par with national and similarly-sized communities. And I really think it's worth noting, not only that the ease of travel by car, but also the overall ease of travel in general and traffic flow, as well as public parking, all increased this year, and not small amounts either. Most of them are in the double digits, so going from 33 to 44%, you know, 39 to 51%, those are significant increases. So I think that it's very noteworthy that, that we have those, those large improvements Residents also expressed appreciation for their mobility-related services. At least half awarded high marks to street lighting, traffic enforcement, street cleaning, and snow removal. And four in 10 or so were also feeling positively about the bus or transit services, traffic and signal removal, or traffic signal timing, excuse me, sidewalk maintenance, and street repair. And all of these services were both stable over time and similar to other communities. We did see a decrease in the availability of paths and walking trails. I'm seeing that there's quite a bit of construction going on, so it might be that, you know, things like that are related here. I think sometimes you can always pinpoint to certain actions that can explain these results.
We doubt a bunch of trails that were, still aren't quite open yet, but-
And I should also note, too, that these levels are pretty similar to those seen in 2015 as well, so it's not a huge decrease over time. Just returning. Residents were less pleased with alternative modes of transportation and provided below-average scores for the ease of travel by bicycle. And about 40% said that they had walked or biked in lieu of driving in the last 12 months. And this was also lower than benchmark communities. So pedestrian and bicycle improvements might be one of those areas of improvement. So I'm going to talk about all the priorities in general in a little bit, but I wanted to point out transportation as a priority. We asked residents about whether or not they felt that a comprehensive transportation system would be a priority for them. As you can see, we had about four in 10 say that it was a high priority. A similar percentage also said it was a moderate priority, so this is pretty high on the list. And then looking at the progress, we had 55% say that they felt the city had made some progress, and another 17 said they'd made significant progress, whereas very few people felt that there was no progress being made or that it wasn't a priority. So on this survey, we also gave residents the chance to write in, in their own words, about a concern or an issue that was not addressed by the survey. Of those residents, we had 16% write in about a mobility-related issue, which was the top-rated concern. Usually, people were citing things like roads, traffic, parking, and public transit. So our final key finding was the natural environment presents opportunities for improvement. Residents were pleased with a number of the natural environment-related aspects of the community. Three-quarters gave positive reviews to the overall natural environment, and eight in 10 thought highly of the air quality. Three-quarters gave high marks to the garbage collection in the city, and then about six in 10, close to seven in 10, gave high marks to drinking water and cleanliness, followed by half who said positive things about natural area preservation and open space. And all of these were stable over time and similar to other communities. Now, I did want to point out a couple of trends that I thought were noteworthy. One of them is for drinking water. So in between 2008 and 2013, we had about 60% of people say that they approved of the drinking water in the community. And then in 2015, that jumped up to 68%, 73% in 2017, and then again, 69%. So drinking water drastically improved in 2015, and then it's remained high over time. One thing to note that we saw for decreases was for yard waste pickup and for garbage and for recycling, and these were remaining stable until about 2015, and then we started to see drop-offs, and those have continued this year. And these tended to be lower than the benchmark, with the exception of drinking water, which was similar.
And the drinking water, I think, can easily be, you know, smoothed. It looks like it's gone up, but it would be, you know, when you take that survey. So when you take the survey, it happens to be when you're on the James River water as opposed to the peddler. I mean, it makes a huge difference.
It does make a difference.
It's a huge, I mean, it's, so it all depends on the day or when it happened. Was it, you know, so.
Sure.
But for the most part, it looks like it's a smooth trend going from 60% up to 69% as opposed to, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I've been able to maintain those since 2015. It's a great thing. The residents' level of engagement in green activities, we had about two-thirds say that they had conserved water and recycled at home. Both of these fell below national and peer cities, and the rate of conserving water also decreased from 2017 to 2019. Also, looking at that community issue where residents could write in their own response, we had about 10% of those responses relate something usually is related to services such as garbage collection, the yard waste pickup, and recycling. So now we're going to talk a little bit about your custom questions. Regarding sources of information about the city government, the events and services that are provided, nearly all residents stated that they had used the local media news source as a, as a major or minor source, and this included television and newspapers. We had at least eight in 10 say that they had used the city's website, and a majority of respondents had also gleaned information from social media, public meetings like this one, and the monthly newsletter. And although we don't really compare differences on custom questions over time because they can be so variable, I will say that the reliance on these sources were almost identical to 2017. And I think that really speaks highly of your communications department, because not only are these remaining stable over time, but these are quite a bit higher than you normally see, especially for public meetings and the cable channel. We tend to have very, very low numbers of people say that they are using those for sources of information, so it sounds like they're being able to kind of get at what they need fairly easily. So as I've kind of mentioned here and there, resident priorities, we're looking at these highest ones. As you can see, the top priorities for the city and its partners were treating all residents fairly and equally regardless of race or any other factor, and providing stable, quality employment opportunities, with seven in 10 indicating these goals were a high priority. Seven in 10 also said that the city had made some or significant progress treating residents fairly, while half said the same of employment. At least half of respondents said that ensuring children are successful in school, affordable housing for all, reducing poverty, and providing access to quality healthcare services were both a high priority and felt the city had made progress on each of them in the recent past. Now, looking at this data over time, we did see that fewer respondents felt that the city should prioritize healthcare in 2017, and more felt that the city had made progress in reducing poverty. Now, looking at the ones that were less of a priority for residents, we had about half from four in 10 of respondents prioritizing ensuring children are kindergarten-ready, building partnerships with other organizations like the business communities surrounding counties, local institutions of higher learning, and others. Also, increasing access to out-of-school activities for kids and providing a comprehensive transportation system. And around six in 10 or more had said that progress had been made in each of these areas. And with that, I am happy to answer any other questions you might have.
There's more questions, I guess, on the last slide that you-
Sure.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you. Very thorough, and I will open it up to questions. Councilmember Havelston.
One quick question I was going to ask on that. So this one, you have titled lowest resident priorities. So if there is a low priority and we're progressing a lot, and it's a low priority, is there a, you know, a disconnect there? I mean, if you're, you don't want to do something, but you're really, really progressing on it, that to me, that almost sounds, maybe you can clarify that on this slide.
Sure. And some of the trends that we've kind of been seeing is that as things are progressing, they become less and less of a priority over time. So that's kind of what we're looking at there, is fewer residents are prioritizing things like reducing poverty because they feel like you've been making more progress on that. So I think, and they're asked in two separate questions. We asked them first, "Please tell me what kind of priority this is," and then also, "What kind of progress the city has made?"
Okay. So they're separate questions?
They are.
One in the-
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Just Councilmember Wilder?
Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Of course.
I'm going back to your slide on the housing availability.
Yes.
Nationally, what are you seeing as far as the housing market? Because I'm trying to see how Lynchburg is based on other localities, or persons going more so to single-family houses, or more to the townhouses? I'm trying to see what is the trend now, so I can make sure I'm in the, understand what the trend really is.
Yeah.
Because me, I would think more so, single families. But I want to make sure that, what you're saying nationally?
Yes. Yes. I think people in general just tend to prioritize single-family detached homes over your multifamily use, apartments, condos, et cetera. So it's really no surprise to me that, that we're seeing that, you know, multifamily housing is kind of bringing up the- housing is kind of bringing up the end. But I think that, too, it's kind of also been a trend that, you know, housing for seniors has become quite a hot topic. That's very common. And I think that, I think that one of the great things is that you're still maintaining that quality housing, as well as your cost of living, because sometimes those things don't go hand in hand. But, sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Good to be here.
I'm encouraged.
Good.
Oh, Mr. Verchek.
I just want to note to council that tomorrow, we're going to be spending time with the leadership team and two senior staff in each department to talk about what our next steps are in terms of using this data. As Joanne said, we want to link this to performance measures and make the data and our performance measures more in alignment with our budget decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
So what's your, like, be tomorrow? Is there another, like, follow-up for us to know, based on the information here, based on what the senior management is saying in the city, this is what we're going to do, such and such? Is that how that works, or?
Yeah, so you should see some, some results of this in the performance measures in the budget for fiscal year 2021. That's how we will use some of this data and use it going forward in terms of bringing reports to you on progress.
All right. Thank you. I don't think there are any other questions. Thank you very much.
Councilor two hours, right?
All right. Thank you. Next is our roll call, and I believe we'll start with Councilmember Wright.
No items, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wilder.
Again, just want to thank all the men in our community that came out for the mentor school again, as the kids go back to school this year. We appreciate the efforts, and we appreciate the community that we have, such a caring community. When there's a call, they always rally to that. So we continue to appreciate living in Lynchburg and the work that we're doing in our community.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
No items, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Para?
Uh, no items, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Huggelson.
No items.
Thank you. So I will take everybody's time then. I have some announcements on, oh-
I don't have any items.
No. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Dolan. I'm so sorry.
I'm invisible tonight.
No, 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 no. No, I'm sorry. On Thursday, January 16th, at 6:30 PM at Sandusky Middle School, Public Works will conduct a public meeting to discuss proposed changes to trash collection system, including bulk and brush. This meeting gives citizens an opportunity to learn about the proposed changes and provide feedback before the department presents a report to City Council on Tuesday, January 28th. So that's very timely with some of the findings and the citizen survey. Next is, I'm sorry?
Can I just say something about that?
Yes.
I attended the one that they did at the public library, and I really encourage people to attend them, because staff does a fantastic job. I really felt it was very, very worthwhile.
Go ahead.
Yes, and I was also there as well. And I had to stand up, it was, it was packed room for, when you talk about trash, Abby wants to hear about that. So again, I want to commend the staff for, for having the event, and all the staff working out, having the breakout sessions, which gave person, individual time to ask questions and get some personal attention. So appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
And one of the things that we did at that meeting last week was citizens broke into groups and some questions were asked. All of the answers to those questions have been compiled into themes and have been posted to the website, so people can see what the themes are in terms of the discussions. We will do the same with the meeting after, after this Thursday.
All right, thank you very much. Next announcement is a portion of Commerce Street will be reduced to one lane from Wednesday, January 15th through Friday, January 17th, 7:30 AM to 4:00 PM daily. In the 1200 block of Commerce Street, it will be reduced to one lane of traffic while crews from Lynchburg Water Resources install water services for new condominiums at 1208 Commerce Street. During the work, flaggers will direct traffic, and the street will remain open to all through traffic, including emergency vehicles. The next announcement is Lynchburg Parks and Recreation will host a community health event on Tuesday, January 21st, in partnership with the Lynchburg Fire Department, Central Health Trauma Services, and the Diamond Hill Community Center. Will host the community health event at the Diamond Hill Community Center, 1005 17th Street. At this event, the basic medical and life safety techniques will be taught, including hands-only CPR training and emergency bleeding control. The event is free and open to the public and done in an open-house format. Next is the Community Development Advisory Committee will meet on Wednesday, January 15th at 7:00 PM at the Miller Center, located at 301 Grove Street, Room 304, to accept public comments prior to preparation of the city's 2020 to 2025 consolidated plan. Specifically, the public is invited to comment on the housing and non-housing community development needs common to low and moderate-income persons and individuals with mental illness, intellectual and physical disabilities, substance abuse or addiction, persons with HIV/AIDS, persons that are homeless, and elderly persons. Next, everyone is invited to the annual Martin Luther King Breakfast, which is planned for Monday, January 20th, at the Virginian Hotel, beginning at 8:30 AM. And you may get tickets online at Eventbrite or at the main branch, Public Library. Tickets are $30, and that is a part of our Dr. Martin Luther King Commission that we have as a city. Next, the Bridges to Progress 90-day meeting and report out is scheduled for Thursday, January 23rd, at the Miller Center at 9:00 AM. So thank y'all for listening to all of the announcements, and we want the public well-informed so they can come out to those meetings and address issues. So thank you. If there's nothing else, we will now recess until 7:30 at EC Glass High School for our public hearing. Thank you.